Good evening, welcome to the June 26 meeting of the Hyde Park Zoning Board of Appeals. Let's begin our meeting with the pledge of allegiance, please.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
I am required to tell you where the exits are. There's one, and we can in, and I think we probably get through the other two.
That one.
That one?
They're going this way.
That one?
They're going this way.
Yeah, that one, yes, alright. So, everybody knows where the exits are here. We have minutes for the April 24 meeting, I would move to their existence, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. The first item is a new application, five, and Andrews Road, the site. Anzo International Company, good evening.
Hi.
Have a seat there.
Thank you.
And we are not having a public hearing yet, so I'm gonna hear about your program.
Hi, well, thank you, so we are actually just looking to put up two flagpoles in front of our tasting room. We wanna have one of the United States and one of Japan, but because they're gonna be over 22 feet to kind of clear the top of our building, I know they need a variance.
Okay.
But we're gonna just have them kind of just where our entrance is slightly to the left, if they're facing that way. And basically, that's the gist, and each slide will be about five foot by eight foot with stamped with aluminum flagpoles. And they're gonna align at the top of our building. We're not planning to install lighting, so we know we'll be taking them down at night. And it's for to kind of really enhance the relationship, the United States, America, and Japan, with the outside of the property.
Before we go further, I wanna make sure you have, we have, have your name on there?
Oh, sorry, Joshua Mayward, and I am the senior brand manager there, and do a lot of, and I run the tasting room, and do a lot of the marketing programs and building programs that we have going on.
So you do the tasting?
I do a lot, yes.
Good, good. Now, as we look at the building from nine, we're looking at, we're looking east of the building. Is that the entrance you're thinking about, or is there another entrance?
It's the, it's the one that was the supermarket building, so when you go in, the main brewery building, and then our, you know, our tasting room is the kind of, the area all in the glass, and we wanna put the flagpoles there, so like when you would enter the tasting room area, the flagpoles would be.
So that would be on the, on the west, southwest corner of the building?
I'm gonna take a report, I'm not a directions person.
On the apartment side, actually.
Entrance is to the south.
If you're looking at the, if you're looking at Stop and Shop, that's going west.
Oh, okay. I have the side one.
The entrance is to the south.
Entrance is to the south, so the entrance is on the south side of the building?
Yes, I know if I'm a little cobb, that's there as well.
Yeah, could, did we see it in that?
Yes. So, there's the, where do you enter?
Right.
Parking lot, this is the tasting room, and this is where we will propose the flagpole.
So it is the southwest corner.
So they'll be side by side?
Yeah.
Did you guys see this?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Alright, and you're looking to make these, how high?
About 30, 30 feet, so that they would be aligned with the top of our building.
Okay. Alright, so 30 feet, and right now, it's 22 feet. So, questions from the board?
I don't have any.
Then what I'd like to do is, I'd like to set a public hearing for July 24th. Is there, is there a motion?
Motion, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, okay. So, we also would refer this to the county for review, for the municipal law, to see if there's any, any questions they have, but we should be able to get that back in time.
Awesome, thank you.
So, and we will send out information to the public, if they come in on that.
Okay.
So, how's the brewer doing?
Pretty well.
Yeah?
For a lot of people coming in, people very curious and excited to try everything, so I think people are very happy with it, enjoy it.
Walk in, or?
Yes, you can walk in, or you can come in for a tour tasting, or you can just walk in. We're open, you know, Wednesday and Thursday evenings, and then Friday, Saturday, and Sundays are main tour days, but we're opening up a little bit more of a summer.
We're happy to have you.
So I said, we'll be here, I said, here to kind of work at Hyde Park.
Good, good, thank you.
So just need a motion and a second on the referral.
Oh, okay, we need a, I would move that we refer this to the county for review under Municipal Law 239-M. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys, have a great night.
Thank you.
Next item is the Schmitz, Kevin and Crystal Schmidt, 7 Weaver Street.
Hi.
How's it going?
Good. Why don't you sit down there, would you, would you, would you tell us your name, please? Kevin Schmidt, you're Kevin, okay. And Kevin, tell us, tell us what you're looking to do.
Well, I'm looking to build a garage, 24 by 48, so from the street, when you're looking at it, it looks like a two-car garage, 24 feet wide, with a 20-foot garage door. It's gonna go 48 feet towards the backyard, hopefully. And then, I want an 18-foot wall, and that puts me at 22 and a half feet with a peak in the roof, which I guess, with the code, it's 22 feet. So that's a little over, and then I'm like 3 feet from the property line, because of the way the driveways in the neighborhood go.
Okay, how wide is your lot, you know?
No, I don't know the exact.
My guess is about 80 feet.
Because I know it's 0.3 acres.
0.3 acres?
0.3, that's a, it's a bigger lot in that neighborhood, actually.
Between the, your garage is gonna be on the left side of your house, looking at the house?
Yeah, looking at the house, it's gonna be on the left side.
Okay.
All the driveways go that way. So from the street view, it's gonna look like a two-car garage. It's gonna have a loft in the back for storage, so the back 24, that's why it's so high.
Okay.
Back 24's gonna be storage in the back, and then it's gonna be shop underneath, and a place to park my cars, because we know parts are getting broken into, and I'm home all the time, I had to retire due to injury, so I need stuff to tinker with. Like, a shop space to tinker.
So you're looking to go right along, within two, a little more than two feet on property line, and six inches above the heights?
Yep.
Those are the two variants, you know those little variants?
Okay.
Okay, alright.
How tall is your house?
It's 21, very nice, I measured it.
How like, the garage height versus the house height, do you know?
It's gonna be slightly higher.
A foot higher?
Or two, ah, I think it's about two.
Two feet, okay.
Yeah. Could you push the garage back, so it doesn't have to be as close to the property line, and then push it over? So, it's already going kind of behind the house, that driveway's gonna come in and then like curve around, that's why I actually changed the design from two garage doors to one big garage door, so we can shoot it a little bit. To go back further, then I would need another variance, because then I would have, wouldn't have enough room in the back. Comfortable ground. And then now I'm gonna extend the driveway, right, like you move it back further, so I have it.
I think it's different material.
I mean, it's like, it's, I have like 2,000 feet to play with of that, for that, but I give it your same, and it is a possibility, we can do.
How far behind that house is the entrance to the garage?
It's like two feet, it's.
Okay, so it's almost, almost, okay, alright.
It's gonna be just slightly behind it, because it's, it's a very narrow driveway.
Right, no, I can see it.
I just wanna get rid of my car garages, I hate those things, they look hideous, and I don't think my neighbor appreciates it.
What's next door on your, on the, a neighbor that would be closest to that? Is there a fence there?
No, there's, there's a fence that like goes just out a little bit, and then there's like space, because there was a dispute over, they connected the fence originally to the garage that was there, and they're like, you can't put a fence against my garage, and it was a whole big thing, so they took a chainsaw and cut the fence.
Okay.
The garage came down. I don't know this, because it was a family house, it was a dispute over the fence. 20 years ago.
Yeah, okay, alright. Okay, what?
And I also have a letter from the neighbor, saying that, like, he doesn't mind that they'll clean down here, we're actually working together to fence it in.
Will you receive that? Was that in the application?
Yes, there's several letters that support the papers.
Okay. It's in red. It's short, go. Okay.
I don't know if you guys saw the pursuit plans, or that? Yeah, you gotta see them.
Yeah. So Kevin, if you get this variance, and you get, you have built the drives, that those are temporary, and drives will no longer be there?
No longer be there.
Okay.
I know you see it all the time, they're hideous.
I was wondering what was going on there.
So we moved.
Yeah, yeah.
And when we moved, yeah, you know, we moved the house away, and when we moved, we like, didn't have a place to put everything, we weren't ready.
Okay, I get it.
And there was like a lot of family stuff that was going in the house, and then now we're reading through the stuff, and those are gonna be gone, because I'll have the space to put it on the second floor.
What do you do with the old house, the one that you moved away from?
I sold it.
You sold it?
Yeah, I sold it in November.
Okay, sounds good, alright. Any, any other questions from the board? Then what I would like to do is set a public hearing for July 24th versus the next meeting, so that we can formally go through everything, and we'll notify the public, et cetera. Okay. I would move that we set a public hearing for July 24th, for the hearing that is. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Good, thank you very much, we'll see you next month then. Okay, the next one is Zunio. Hi.
Hello.
Could you state your name, sir?
I'm Paul Tierens, engineer for the project.
Okay, good, tell us about the, tell us about the project.
Zunio's bought the property in 2022, and since then, went ahead and rebuilt the front porch and the rear porch of the, of the house, and then filed for a building permit. So then, so that led us to go into the process of building permit being reviewed by TAD, the property is existing non-conforming for the front yard setback, so the front porch wasn't put back exactly as it was, they added a roof over it, and some steps, you know, due to the height of it and the location, so they moved it, you know, 4 feet closer to Madison Avenue, so therefore, we're here for the front yard setback variance, and the, there was an arbor, childless, whatever you wanna call it, off the back corner of the house that was existing before they purchased the house, and side yard setback is 20 feet, is located 11.7 feet from the side, so we need a variance for the side yard setback holes.
Let me ask you a silly question, is your mailbox across the street?
I have no idea. I'm only an engineer, I don't know what mailbox is.
Because I went and looked at 4 Madison, and I looked at the mailbox, and it didn't look like this, but the house is probably across the street.
They weren't, yeah, 4 Madison's on the, say, the 9G side of Madison Avenue?
Okay.
I don't know what side you were looking at.
I was looking at the, probably the other side.
Yeah.
Okay. Questions? Question? Answer, anything? Okay, good, I think we understand what you wanna do, what we'd like to do then is set a public hearing for July 24th next time.
Motion?
Second? Is there a second?
Second.
All, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, good. Thank you, look forward to seeing you next time. And then I'll figure out where the mailbox is.
Alright.
Thanks very much. Okay, next is a new public hearing for Kathleen, what's her name, tell us?
Teas, or Teles.
37 Turwenger, Turwenger Road. Please have a seat. And tell us, first tell us your name.
My name is Kathleen Teas, and I live at 37 Truliger Room in Hyde Park.
Good, a woman. Tell us what, Madam Secretary, was there a public hearing notice published for this?
Yes, it was published in the Poughkeepsie Journal on July 19th, 2024.
Then I would move to open the public hearing, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Now, we know who you are, tell us a little bit about your request.
I'm looking for an area variance provision, because we were, we're selling our house, it was being looked at, PTAC that we had that was in the house died, and we need heating and cooling, because it's a room that is like a porch room, and it's the room where most people were gonna be, were spending their time, and so we ended up, we got somebody to come in, and we did work on the heating cooling system, split, split level, and so they, they were taking care of getting the paperwork in, and I think that, it probably went a little bit later, I was visiting a sign on in Florida, and, and they were on vacation, and kind of pushed things up a couple, two or three weeks, and so we were trying to get stuff done, because I didn't wanna like leave that PTAC sitting in the wall that was the front, and I felt it wasn't right for the new people, because some people looked at our house, they probably assumed it was working, and it was not, so we, we fixed it, so it was about $8,000.
So you're really looking for variance?
Approval, we didn't get approval, which I apologize, we didn't get approval before, we did not, I didn't have to make any deal attempts, I probably should.
One more second, okay, 36 to 52, okay. Questions, are there any public comments? Do we have any, do we have anything from, do we have any comments from the center, from the public?
No. And I measured the measurements, now I know it's not a true measurement, because it's not one underground, and it's not one, it's not like a, you know, A-4, A-4, C-4 kind of a thing, so it's really just.
It's right on, it's right on the house.
Right.
Now you were really talking.
Right, and I need you to just, it's a little, it's a little distance from the house, it's 17 inches from the house, it's a stand-up, so it's got anything water-wise, and it goes down, so I measured, I mean, just because I didn't have a, I just didn't have.
Questions from the board? Do you want to have a question?
And it's covered, so it's not, it's not an issue for like looking at it, because it's behind a road to Denver, so we can see it, it's in the, in the exact spot that the PTAC was previously.
Okay.
And, and yeah, so I don't think it's bothering you.
Is there anybody from the public who would like to make any comments? There would be none, okay. Any other questions? I would move to close the public hearing, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We have somebody to read this? Who got it? You got it? Okay, would you read it?
Resolution to grant area variance Kathleen and Gustavo Teas, 37 Turwenger Road, Hyde Park, June 26, 2024, resolution number 2424-08Z. Whereas applicants Kathleen and Gustavo Alteas have submitted an application for an area variance to install exterior air conditioning equipment at a property located at 37 Turwenger Road, Hyde Park, New York 12538, identified as tax parcel number 6164-01-116669 in the Neighborhood Zoning District, the site and, whereas the project is depicted on an aerial photo with measurements shown, whereas the applicant, applicant seek an area variance from zoning law section 108-5.15 bulk regulations in neighborhood district to change the minimum front yard setback from 50 feet to 35 feet to permit the installation of exterior air conditioning equipment associated with single-family dwelling, the requested variance, and whereas, whereas, whereas.
Sorry to interrupt, sorry to interrupt, but I remember it says 36 feet on the resolution.
I said 35.
I said 35. Oh, sorry. 36, okay.
Now, therefore, be resolved, the zoning board appeals makes the following filings in accordance with section 267-B, the town law in Hyde Park zoning law section 108-33.6B2 regarding the requested variance. The requested variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties. The equipment will be situated in front of the house, however, it will be effectively screened by the existing vegetation on the property. The benefits sought by the applicants cannot be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than an area variance. This is the only location feasible to install an outside portion of the unit, there's no other way to cool this part of the house without having the air conditioner installed in a proposed location. The requested variance may be considered numerically substantial, the variance will change the permitted side yard setback from 50 to 36 feet, which is a decrease of 28% for the insulation of exterior air conditioning equipment, however, any detriment to the neighborhood is far outweighed by the benefits to the application. The requested variance will not have adverse effects or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the general neighborhood or district. Decreasing the front yard setback requirement to allow a variance so exterior air conditioning equipment can be installed will not have a negative impact on the existing physical or environmental, environmental conditions of the neighborhood. The difficulties are self-created, be it further resolved, the zoning board of appeals hereby grants the requested variance subject to the following conditions. Pursuant to section 108-33.5F1, authorized activity must commence within one year from the date of issuance, otherwise it is revoked. Two, payment of all fees and escrow.
Thank you, Mr. Donnelly, Mr. Donnelly has moved this, is there a second?
Second.
Madam Secretary, hold board, please.
Yes, Mr. Agarwal.
Yes.
Mr. Donnelly.
Yes.
Mr. Perkins.
Yes.
Vice Chair Bowen.
Yes.
And Chairman McNary.
Yes. Congratulations, congratulations.
Thank you so very much, what happens next, I need a piece of paper for the new people that will move into our house.
Once the resolution is filed tomorrow, it'll be attached to the building permit authorization, which will be sent back downstairs.
Thank you so much, I appreciate everybody who's listening.
Thank you. Next, we have the Gleason House, 43 South Cross Road. This is known better as the house on the corner, on the curb. I go by it for a moment? Good evening, sir, can you state your, state your name?
Tom Gleason.
Okay. Madam Secretary, have we notified the public of the public hearing notice?
Yes, the public hearing notice is published in the Poughkeepsie Journal on July 19th, 2024.
Okay, I would move to open the public hearing, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Mr. Gleason, good evening, and can you give us an idea about the project?
We wanna rebuild the, it's a room that used to be a porch, which is about seven and a half by nine and a half inside, and we want to make it into more 10 by 12, or make it, make the rear be to a 12-foot's room standard, versus the seven and a half that it is.
Just taking a porch and making it a?
We're gonna demolish, demolish the porch.
Right.
And add a full extension of the house.
If I understand correctly, that, that addition fits right in the corner of the house, I mean, it's, it's almost completing the square of the house, is that correct?
Yes, it is.
Will it extend beyond what the other portion of that back of the house is?
Yes, and well, we're extending about three and a half feet.
Three and a half?
To get it into a 12 by 10 room.
Okay. Four-season?
Yes, it's four-season with a little notch, but how it became four-season was there before I knew it was there.
You made it four-season now?
It's been that way since then.
Get a converter in there, okay. You were close to the, the part of the variance is for the?
Rear, rear setup.
The rear, what's behind it?
My brother.
No, behind the fence, you have a large fence now on the property, which is the property line?
That property is owned by my wife, I'm just representing her, because she's a doctor, she's at the cancer ward, whatever, so, the property behind her property, which is the house, it's owned by my wife, is my property.
Okay.
15 acres, it's not that I own, what I have.
Which are primarily woods at that point?
And it's about 100 and some feet of woods between the two houses.
Okay, and to the, to, if you're looking at the house to the left of the house, you're also looking for variance to the side, you don't need that, okay? So just in the rear? Variance just in the rear, okay. So, and that fence is yours, okay? Questions? Any? Is there anybody from the public that would like to make comments? Okay, then I would move to close public hearing.
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. We have a resolution here. Catherine Gleason, 43 South Cross Road, Scottsburg, dated June 26, 2024, resolution 24-9Z, whereas the applicant Catherine Gleason, the property owner, has submitted an application for an area variance to change the rear setback for an addition of a single-family residence to project as property located at 43 South Cross Road, Scottsburg, New York 12580, identified as tax parcel number 133200-6166-01-072707, in the Greenbelt District. And whereas the applicant seeks an area variance from zoning law section 108, 5.15 bulk regulation to change the minimum rear yard setback from 50 feet to 25.3 feet for the construction of a one-story addition associated with a single-family dwelling, and whereas, 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 now therefore be it resolved, the zoning board of appeals makes the following findings in accordance with section 267 of the town law, Hyde Park, zoning law section 108-33.6B2 regarding requested variance. The requested variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties. The addition will be at the rear of the house, and it will square up the existing house, contiguous property, because the rear property line is an underdeveloped field. Did I describe that right, underdeveloped field? More like a forest?
Yeah.
Number two, the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the area variance. The existing rear of the house is a section that is most logically conducive to the proposed addition. Three, the requested variance may be considered numerically substantial, the variance will change the permitted side yard setback from 50 to 25 feet, 0.3 inches, and the existing rear of the house is currently 28 feet, 11 inches from the rear property line. The requested variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the general neighborhood or district. The addition will not be visible in the front of the house, it will not have an adverse environmental impact on the property, and the difficulties are self-created. Be it further resolved, that the board of appeals hereby grants the requested variance subject to the following conditions. Pursuant to section 108-33F5F1, the authorization activity must commence within one year from the date of issuance, otherwise it will be revoked. Two, payment of all fees and escrow. I've moved this resolution, is there a second?
Second.
Madam Secretary, hold the board, please.
Yes, Mr. Agarwal.
Yes.
Mr. Donnelly.
Yes.
Mr. Perkins.
Yes.
Vice Chair Bowen.
Yes.
Chairman McNary.
Yes. We're about to put the, there's, I have enough things, sir. Thank you, sir. Old Business, CAC NY Landhold, 2401Z, Row 2450, Row 9G, Hyde Park. This is an appeal to the zoning administrator's determination to deny application for the site plan and approval for proposed development in the Greenbelt, zoning district of the town Hyde Park. The public hearings have been closed, we have received extensive information from the applicant, as well as from the public, both, I will say, both positive and negative. We have also received a number of. We have also received a number of documents from a lawyer representing a number of the people there. The question that the board is going to be deciding really is, should we overturn the decision made by the zoning administrator? And let me, let me stop there and see if board members have anything. Mr. Sec, Mr. Vice President, anything?
Yeah, I have something to read. This has been a complex yet fascinating proposal to the board. The presentations from both sides have been intense, sincere and creative, advocating for and against the approval. As a board member, I have studied and read voluminous documents, letters in favor of and those repudiating expansion. The Sixth Sense's principals and staff welcomed the board graciously for a site visit detailing their proposed development in all its majesty, and I'm prepared to cast my vote tonight.
Mr. Agarwal?
I don't have anything.
Mr. Donnelly?
I'll just say that the findings of the boards, you know, will actually reflect my decision.
Okay.
I would like to thank Mr. Palton Enoir and Mr. Raplansky, someplace, for the work that they did and all the information they have given us. I certainly appreciate the thoughtful arguments that were put forth and I did spend a lot of time weighing those arguments, pro and con, and I think I was able to distill what I believe is an accurate and fair judgment that is represented in our findings.
I think, let me comment also, the information we, we received from all the people, I think certainly and from our counsel, certainly allowed us to spend an exorbitant amount of time, not exorbitant, but a lot of time, reading the documents and understanding the various arguments. And there were a lot of very funny points. I think, as Mr. Perkins has indicated, I think has brought us to a question of whether we support or don't support the decision made by the zoning board administrator. With that in mind, I would like to read the resolution and at the end of that, then the board will, will vote. This is the resolution approving findings and decisions dated June 26, 2024. In the matter of, saying Lanning Holdings Inc., Sixth Sense Hudson Valley, 2450, around 9G, Hyde Park, June 26, 2024. This is resolution 2024-01Z. Whereas on October 3, 2023, the applicant, CD Lanning Holdings Inc., AKA Sixth Sense Hudson Valley, submitted an application for the site plan approval to zoning administrator Kathleen Moss, CA Moss. And whereas the applicant was to expand an existing access drive, install a new drive south of the existing drive with lighting, lighting and signage, and to construct a parking lot, golf cart garage and bird watching structure on the property located at 2450 North Unruck 9G, identified as tax parcel 626803461408-0000 in the Greenville zoning district. And whereas the applicant stated that the project is to serve a conference center located in the town of Clinton on property identified as tax parcel number 62680059136700. And whereas zoning administrator Moss issued a letter of determination dated December 21st, 2023, in which she denied the application and found that the project would serve a commercial development in the town of Clinton and that a commercial general use is prohibited in the Greenville district. And whereas the applicant thereafter revised the proposed site plan by removing the proposed lighting, signage, parking lot, golf cart garage and bird watching structure and resubmitted the application for a site plan approval dated January 25, 2024, to the zoning administrator Moss. And whereas the applicant again stated that the expanded access will serve a conference center located in the town of Clinton. And whereas zoning administrator Moss issued a second letter of determination dated February 9, 2024, in which she found that the application is for development improvements to an existing private drive and the development of a new access across the Chrome Elbow Creek to accommodate a conference center retreat use proposed for development in the adjoining town of Clinton. Whereas the town of Hyde Park does not have a separate use in the schedule of use regulations for a conference center. Whereas the use category in the town of Hyde Park that is most similar to the conference center is a lodging facility. Lodging facilities are not permitted in the Greenville district. Whereas the St. Andrews zoning district pursuant to 108-513A of the zoning code permits lodging facilities, including conference centers, which further associates the conference center use with the lodging facility. Whereas New York case law has established that generally use of land in one zoning district for an access road to another zoning district is prohibited where the road would provide access to uses that would themselves be barred if they had been located in the first zoning district. Whereas because a lodging facility is not permitted use in the Greenville, the associated expansion of the access drive to serve that use is not permitted. Whereas the access is not eligible for expansion as a nonconforming use under Article 6 of the Hyde Park zoning code because the zoning changed Greenville district in 2005 and the prior zoning was R4 flat 40,000, 40,000, which did not allow any use or accessory use activity commonly conducted as a business. Whereas on February 15, 2024, the applicant, by its attorney Victoria Polidoro, submitted an administrative appeal which sought to annul both the December 21, 2023 and the February 9, 2024 letter of determination. And whereas a group of adjacent property owners collectively known as Stop Sixth Sense New York or Common Sense HV by their attorney Warren Raplansky opposed the applicant's appeal. And whereas duly noticed, public hearings were held on April 24, 2024 and May 22, 2024 during the duly noticed meetings during which all those who wished to speak were heard. And whereas the public hearing was closed at the conclusion of the May 22, 24 meeting, but the board allowed further written comments to be submitted until June 19, 2024. Whereas the board has reviewed and considered all statements and submissions by members of the public as well as from attorneys Polidoro and Raplansky and Common Sense HV. And whereas in consideration of the foregoing, the board now desires to render a determination of the appeal. Now therefore, be it resolved as follows. The zoning board of administration upholds the December 21, 23, 2023 letter of determination to the extent that it finds a commercial general use is not permitted in the Greenville district. And number two, the zoning board of appeals modifies the December 21, 2023 letter of determination to the extent that it finds that the project constitutes a commercial general use under the Hyde Park code and finds that the project constitutes a lodging facility. Number three, the zoning board of appeals upholds the February 9, 2024 letter of determination to the extent that it finds the expansion of the access drives must serve a use which is permitted in the Greenville district. And number four, the zoning board of appeals modifies the February 9, 2024 letter of determination to the extent that it can be read to prohibit the continued use of the existing access drive to serve the existing new branch use under the 2017 SUP and finds that the existing access drive can continue to be used for the existing use. And number five, the zoning board of appeals upholds the February 9, 2024 letter of determination to the extent that it finds that the access is ineligible for expansion as a nonconforming use under Article 6 of the Hyde Park code. And number six, the zoning board of appeals finds that the proposed development does not constitute an alternative permitted use in the Greenville district such as camp, agriculture, animal husbandry or outdoor commercial recreation use under the Hyde Park zoning code. And number seven, the zoning board of appeals upholds the February 9, 2024 letter of determination to the extent that it finds that the project constitutes a lodging facility use as defined by the town of Hyde Park zoning code. And number eight, the zoning board of appeals upholds the February 9, 2024 letter of determination to the extent that it finds that the proposed project is prohibited in the Greenville district. Number nine, the board hereby adopts the findings and decision dated June 26, 2024, which is attached hereto and is made a part of the findings and decisions, details and explains the rationale for the conclusions reached in this resolution. Number 10, the board authorizes and directs and empowers the chairman to sign findings and decision dated June 26, 2024. And 11, the board authorizes, directs and empowers the zoning board clerk to file this resolution along with the findings and decisions dated June 26, 2024, in the office of the town clerk within five business days of the date of this resolution, as well as to transmit copies to attorneys Polidoro and Raplansky, consul for the appellant's and Common Sense HV respectively. Madam Secretary?
Mr. Donnelly?
Yes.
Second.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, would you hold the board, please?
Yes. Mr. Agarwal.
Yes.
Mr. Donnelly.
Yes.
Mr. Perkins.
Yes.
Vice Chair Bowman.
Yes.
Chairman McNary.
Yes. The resolution then stands approved as suggested here. And thank you all for your participation and for the information provided and the participation and the, and all the efforts to understand this project. We very much appreciate it. We know it was not an easy decision and we hope that it was a, one that we understand for the community and for the local. Okay. Therefore, is there any other business to discuss? I will entertain a motion for adjournment. Motion. Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Thank you very much. The next meeting will be Wednesday, July 24, 2024.